Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:00 on December 6th at the Village Hall. Need a motion to adopt the agenda, but before that, I'd like to make two changes if the board agrees. We have a letter to sign for the Vermont Agency of Transportation to get our money. And the second thing is, I thought, I don't know, we have one candidate here, I don't know if the other one will show, I thought that if we could move up the vacancies, 11 up to number three, and if the board agrees and we want to pick one tonight, Kim has got the paperwork, and that individual could then join the board and participate, rather than waiting for the meeting to be open. So if everyone agrees with that, somebody make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Joe, I have another change to recommend to the agenda. And also, I'd just like clarification on, it's provided for in the statute that we can do of the appointment in an executive session? So how are we gonna?
That would be up to the board. I thought what we would do was, if the candidates want to speak, and then the board can either elect, vote in open session, or go to deliberate in executive session. It's up to the board. But it doesn't make a difference, we can still move it up, and then the board can make a decision.
Absolutely. And then Phil has his hand up, and then I have a change I'd like to recommend, too.
Go ahead. Make the change.
Okay. I would like to recommend that we postpone the health officer status of the CIC building until 12:20, please, because we are seeking information from Agency of Natural Resources, BOSHA, and the Act 250, and I think we'll have more information to give a more meaningful report on the 20th.
So why wouldn't you want to get this in the interim report?
Because I think the interim report will be more meaningful if we have the information we're waiting for from those agencies. I mean, Rich said earlier that he doesn't have anything new to report yet, and that's because we're waiting on information from these agencies about the building.
Is that okay with you, Rich?
The only new news that I heard was, uh, people...
Well, I mean, why don't we just keep it on there, and then let Rich say it, rather than do it...
Nothing really big.
Nothing? I mean, what's up to the board? Who's waiting for this information?
So, Rich and I had a conversation about the status of the CIC building, and when we had that conversation, we decided that we would get updates from the Agency of Natural Resources, the BOSHA, and this topic came up in the Act 250 hearing as well. And so, we are waiting for more information from these agencies, and I think we'll have it by the 20th. Seems to make a lot of sense that we wait and be fully informed.
No, I think so, I just haven't heard anything about it, that they would do that.
Yeah, yeah.
If that's okay, then we'll just...
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, sorry. I hadn't been talking to the Agency of Natural Resources, I just, I hadn't, I don't know really much, if there's something going on there.
All right. I think we need an update.
Right, right, yeah. I'm not sure.
Well, it's up to you, if you want to, I mean, you're on the agenda, we can let you say what you want to say.
There's only one thing to know as far as...
Well, one of the things is, if we can get the new, then we can get the updated report on the table.
I think that will be prudent to move on with the agenda, so that's fine with me.
Okay. All right, so we have a, yes?
Okay, with regard to the executive session, it's only, I'm gonna say this bluntly, the reason you have an executive session is somebody wants to say something that they don't want just out there, okay? Okay, so, as long as there ain't any of that, then you can do it without going into executive session. You still have to make the discussion and the appointment out in the open.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that is the reason for it, it's like a personnel matter, that the guy is drunk every day, you know, something like that.
No, I don't think that, I don't think that's a fair characterization of the rationale for yet to...
That is the exact rationale to go into a personnel thing, is that you have something in private that you don't want to share in public. That's the reason for it.
In the past...
But you don't need to make, but you need to make the appointment, if there isn't anything like that, there isn't anything to discuss privately, then it's all out in the open.
Yeah, in the past, it's left board, this will be the third appointment that I'm, we've always done it in open sessions.
It's fine with me, but to characterize something as, if you have anything negative to say, you're gonna vote for executive session, if you don't, you won't. I don't think that's a fair characterization of the statute. It says clearly, the open meeting law allows public bodies to enter executive session to consider the appointment or evaluation of a public officer or employee, period. It doesn't say, only if you think you're gonna say something bad.
It doesn't ask to say that, that's what it's meant by that.
It's, it's fine with me for that interpretation to be out there, but I, I think that I would feel more comfortable if we could, if we could consider having an executive session without that kind of hanging over my head.
Well, that would be up to the board, when we get to that position, so...
I have another question. You want to have the AOP letter, where do you want that, under highway?
No, I want to, yeah, throw it on the highway. All right, so we need a motion to accept the amended agenda. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, so now, the minutes, we have the minutes of October 15th, are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Yes, I have an addition, please. So, in the minute, under Act 250 application, the first thing I'd like to recommend is that the amendment, most are amended to say, "Application pre-hearing conference at the former CIC building." And then, I would also like to recommend attaching a copy of the pre-hearing conference report that I gave to the select board, because it clearly states the reason for the citation of entering into executive session, because at the, at 250 pre-hearing conference, there was a quayside judicial portion of the meeting, and that's the reason we entered into executive session to talk about it. And I know there were some questions on the part of citizens about the fact that we characterized it as litigation, which is accurate, but the grant pronoun board is in this report, so I'd like to recommend, Mr. Chair, that we just attach a copy of the report to the minutes for the 15th. And I've got a copy of the report right here for Bill.
Okay. Do you have any other?
I have no idea what the, what the, what to write, other than, other than, at the very beginning, it's a conference, but I have no idea what to write about going into executive session.
No, it's right here. Bill, that's why I'm providing a copy of it, because in my report, it says, "A report on this aspect of the pre-hearing conference and executive session pursuant to Vermont Title I, Section 13, 313, 1E, matters pertaining to possible or pending civil litigation." So you don't have to write it down, I've got it right here for you.
Okay, that's set forth in the, that's set forth in the attach.
That's right.
I'm putting that under number nine.
Under?
Number nine. The reason to go into executive, is that it?
Okay, wherever you want to put it.
Okay.
Okay. Shall I give this to you now, or do we need to approve it first?
No, we approve it first. Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all in favor of the corrections, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Did somebody make a motion ask?
Yeah.
Refusing?
Yeah, Suzanne, I think.
Suzanne?
Suzanne made the motion. Okay, so, so now we've moved up to vacancy. We have the candidates here. I want to thank you for stepping up and taking control of this vacancy until March. Would anyone really like to have some, say something to the board? Of why you'd like to do, or anything, or any? Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Okay, go. I wrote your letter, but I think there's nothing in the room. I've been in this position before, filled it a vacant state, and I enjoyed working with the inner workings of the town, and I have knowledge of the town, I've been here for quite a while, worked with you on other committees, and have been with town through some Irene and things that have gone, where community has come together. So I was thinking I was gonna say something later, it has not coincided my thoughts, excuse me. But I would enjoy working with this board, and would enjoy, once again, following the inner workings of the community, the town, and would enjoy the opportunity. So I think in my letter, that's basically what it said.
Thank you, Rich.
My, it's a lot difficult. Kathy had asked me if I would consider it, and I always had it back in my mind at some point in my living in town, I would probably run for it at some point. And I had the time, in my schedule, so I figured I would throw my hat, and really love it, and I figured that there's a good opportunity, if I love it, I'd run, if I don't like it, I'm out.
You have that, you have that option.
Phil's had one, but...
Does the board have any questions, or any comments, towards the two candidates? Okay, so now, we have two options here, we have an option, we can take a vote and appoint one of the two candidates now, or we could go into executive session and do so. It's simply up to the board how they want to proceed.
I move that we go into executive sessions to make this decision, Mr. Chair, per Title 1, VSA 313, Section A, 3. I really want to thank both candidates for running for this position, being considered for this decision.
Well, I tried to make the motion.
I did, I did make one.
Okay, but let's stop it there, thank them later.
I didn't get, I didn't get the reason?
So, the reason is, appointment of a public officer, provided the body shall make a final decision to appoint a public officer in an, in an open meeting, and shall explain the reasons for its final decision during the open meeting. And that's provided for in Title 1, VSA Section 313, subsection A, 3.
Do we have a second, just a moment?
One second.
Okay.
So now may I send?
Yes. No, no, where do we have the, you know, done, that's true, go ahead.
So I just want to say thank you again to each of the candidates for running, and I think that in fairness to both of the candidates, it would be advisable, since we are allowed, and if, under very rare circumstances, are we allowed to go into executive session to consider any part of it. But this is one of them, and I think that's for a very good reason. And we don't have to follow any process, there's no statutory process called for, we can reach this decision any way we want to. But I do think it's between the two of us to have this conversation in executive session.
I'm kind of sorry that that is the way the board is, that the motion is made, because I think it would be to the advantage of whoever gets the nod, to get indoctrinated, and they could participate in this meeting as a select person, but that's...
That has been an ongoing motion.
No, I'm just, I'm giving you a summary of my discussion, but why, I'm against it, that's all I'm saying. But that's, I would rather see that. And in the past, on my tenure as the board, we've had, I believe, two, possibly three, and it was all done in open session, so the process has been set. I'm not saying that's wrong or right, I just, that's my view. Go ahead, man.
I am confused. You go into executive session, discuss it, could you come out and you have the decision and then...
But that might be at 9:00 tonight, or 9:00 tonight.
Is it gonna take two hours to discuss?
We have a, we have a very full agenda. I don't know how long this is gonna take. We have personnel policy to deal with, and whatever, so that was my share.
Yeah, this is a very important decision for the town, for the select board to make. There are budget meetings coming up, if we appoint someone tonight, they'll be able to participate in all of those. The candidates can stay during the course of this meeting, and hear everything that goes on during the course of the meeting, so they really won't miss out on a thing except sitting in the way. And so, I, I think for, for the sake of due diligence and due process, that we should go into executive session to consider this matter.
Okay.
So, are you saying it's gonna take too long, and that's why you can't move into executive session right now, and then come back upstairs to the meeting, and then proceed?
Well, we could do that, but that's not how it's getting.
I'd be happy to do that, that makes it better.
Well, first of all, before we get a, wait, stop, we have a motion on the table, okay? So before we make any decisions of whether we're gonna move it or not, we have to deal with the motion, okay? And I understand your recommendation, that we could move the agenda of going to executive session and then come back, I understand that. But that's not what the motion says, the motion says we go into executive session.
I'm happy to make a motion to go into executive session immediately.
Do we have a second to that?
One second.
Wait a minute. You have a motion that's on the floor, you have to, you have to withdraw the motion.
Yeah, we have to withdraw the motion.
Okay, so I'll draw the original motion, and I make the motion that we go into executive session for the same title I said, and we do so immediately following the motion being made and passed.
Does the second accept the new motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any, any other discussion on the executive session issue? If not, all in favor of going to executive session now?
Wait a minute, did we get a second, John's second?
John?
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we need a motion now to mount the executive session, so move. Do we have a session?
Who is the head?
Then John.
Oh, just a second. Joe, would you announce the motion?
I said, I said we need a motion to...
You know, announce that John and Suzanne...
Oh, okay, yeah, John made the motion, Suzanne seconded the motion, to come out of executive session. Okay, now we are back to the regular, regular meeting. The four of us had a brief discussion, we decided that there was not gonna be a vote, but we had a unanimous consensus that we would like to have Rich Thompson be the select board. And the reason for, one of, what the main reason was, is the way he handled the whole CIC operation, with the health officer and whatever, and he felt that he would be a very good asset to be on the board. Now, that doesn't mean that you normally wouldn't do it, but that there was, those intensive done. So, congratulations.
No, you have to appoint him, you have to appoint him then.
Okay, but, okay, you have to, we'll appoint you, and then you have to seek him, and sign the pledge, so forever here, you're gonna be on his left board, until he elected him. And then we'll move on, and you can come up here and take a seat. So, do we have a vote to, we need a motion to appoint Rich Thompson?
So move.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. So go seek him, Rich, and then, then you can give us a brief approval as well.
Congratulations.
Did you get the key back in the cell, I don't know?
No, I have not yet.
Okay, so, okay. Did you get the key back in the cell, I don't know?
No, I have not yet.
Rich, and the health officer, you have agreed to vote? Just say something, or...
What's rude to say? I haven't heard from anybody down there a couple months, and I was talking to, because they have, I didn't reach out to the gentleman I've been speaking with, to the environmental of Vermont. I was gonna say that.
Sean Vaughn?
The Agency of Natural Resources, Sean Vaughn.
He's the, is he from the Agency of Natural Resources of Vermont? It's some of them, yeah. But they are, they do have the system up there, up in the country. It is doing what it's supposed to be doing, but the only twist was, they detected some kind of air quality circumstances, and not really too sure what that is yet, and they don't think it related to historic contamination of that, but it is, I don't know, if it's dangerous or not, I don't know that either. Yeah, there's, I got a lot of opinions about it, but not really too much more to say. I said, it's not the case.
So let's wait and see what happens with Richard Dan and Danny Vaughn.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Rich. How are you doing? Who's gonna do, give the FEMA report?
Last Thursday, we met with the representative from FEMA, and went over all the damage on every road, and come up with like, those 39, 40 sites, and each project can only have 10 sites, so we broke it down into five projects. And she left, and she's gonna put a cost to those projects, and give it back to us, and I just got an email from her for her left, and she's gonna do that by Friday. Now, we have to, as a town, come up with the actual costs that we have on each of those sites, then we will match up with her, and see what we come up with. So, that's where it stands, so it's all up to us to get up the speed with her.
Anybody have any questions, John? Okay, yes, Bill?
Did you want to talk about culverts?
Letrow?
Or any of the culverts?
Well, I could speak on, the only project we did do anything with, was the ledro, which the public watched out. The main reason was because we don't have a hydraulic study from the state, and we're also waiting for Reno Brothers to give us a cost on it. So when we get a hydraulic study, they'll, they'll tell us what we have to do up there, and then we can go on from there. There are four other culverts that we've gotta put into mitigation, to see if we can get those done, so we've got to work on that with her, and probably dig up the history of the damage to the roads that they've caused over the years, which we could do very easily. So, those culverts may take a while before they're taken care of. But the road damage is all fixed, it's just a matter of coming up with the exact cost that submitted it to FEMA, so we'll get paid for it.
So, I wanted to be clear that four other culverts are not part of the five projects?
Yes, they're a project by themselves.
Okay. Thank you.
And the roads have gone into different projects, too. And the ledro is a project by itself.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I know it was a task to get all this information together with measurements and fixtures, and Danny, you mentioned way back that you needed equipment to do that, is that all set now, or not?
Regional has it.
With the regional, I brought it down with the regional passage, I don't know, nobody has, I'd be more than happy to pick it up, if I know it's ready, but...
I haven't heard nothing from Jeff yet on that. Jeff will make this, if that was being used this time around, it would have made it really easy. Katie, that is the FEMA representative, has made it pretty easy, though, the way, so the, the number she's coming up with is the estimated cost, even though we're done completely, we have to go through all the same steps as if we were not done. But she's made it, she was, the last time she was here, was, doing here over maybe an hour, or half, so...
Yeah, she's made it pretty clear that, whatever her figures, if her figures differ from ours, she will adjust first to the actives, so I'm pretty confident that we're gonna get back in line with what we've set.
This is excellent, thank you so much. By the way, I'm gonna be in Rockford on Friday, I'm happy to go over there and pick up that equipment if it's ready.
Yeah, will somebody do that? I mean, Bill, maybe, or Danny, call and see where it is? I gotta be in Rockford next week, and as soon as they're, she can go to the, we can pick it up.
I have that a little bit regional anyway, so Danny, if you can...
Be sure to call ahead, because there's not many people in the office down there.
Thank you, there, good advice.
Anything else? Danny, 121 vacant update?
So they came back and they fixed the atrium on the Kamehameha Bridge, so that has been fixed, they signed off on their bill, and they did that. They cleaned up one of the lawns down there where they swept everything off of the road and they milled it. Whether they do the rest in the spring, I don't know, but they don't, are gonna have to clean all the lines up off the lawns down through there.
The state's not gonna do those, painting the lines?
That's up to the state, the state's not doing any painting this year, they're having a hard time even getting paint.
It's pretty difficult coming up here with the block.
I mean, the state won't do it this year, I don't know if you could even hire a private contractor being solely, they're having a hard time getting paint.
I'm just thinking of liability and safety, because people don't know where all this, really, I got out of time, and I've tried that road all the time.
You're trying to talk me into looking at it, but it'd be a tab's expense.
Be not much it would cost.
I know they're saying a gallon of paint, from like, $10 a gallon, or 15, so it'd be, if they can even get it, but I can make a phone call.
Thanks.
If they're gonna do that, then they should do the other end of 121 also.
Yeah.
Do we have to have pay, in a temporary situation, is there anybody who could be, white cars on the side?
No, it's not, it's the shadow line you're talking about. It's a set of lines.
Yeah, just so you don't go over.
Yeah, the white line.
The white line, but never.
Do you think there's a little bit of white cars, like on the end, or when they're doing a temporary?
Well, we think not.
If I would take that on, the first time you come. The bridge, the Dallas Falls, the Waltham softball, Thursday and Friday, they were putting tape down.
They painted it. That's not true, I think Beadys and Brothers probably painted it.
But that's what they were doing, when they were applying, putting tape down.
Well, let's investigate separately first, and then we can discuss it.
Yeah.
Although I'm not sure, with the fact we have a next meeting in my head, small, whatever.
On the...
Danny, tell us what happened.
The guardrails are done. They did one, the bridge, the Delaware, and then four or six sites on 35, they did the same thing. And, uh, five or six sites on thirty-five, they did it the same day.
The girls are on your office?
I know we ran out of the used rail. I think they ended up using three pieces of there that they brought with us to finish the last ball. I haven't seen the overfinishes downstairs, so.
Anything else, Ben?
Nope.
But there's one other item. We need an authorization, we need to sign this letter to the Ramon Agency of Defense to take this way to get our money.
That's the rip rap on the state.
Yeah. The rip rap on the state, otherwise.
And the roach.
Yeah, and seventy thousand, isn't it?
And the roach is on the other end.
It's seventy thousand that we get reimbursed for. Somebody make a motion, uh.
What's that you're saying? We haven't even seen it.
Well, you have to read it. I am reading.
One twenty-one did not part of the FEMA, so that's why we have, uh.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion on that floor?
Yeah.
All favor say aye and opposed? If they find it. Any, any other high-level issues before we move on? If not, Kim, you're on here now. Do you have the link to the tax policies, get your own thing?
No, um, I think the tax policy, everything on is staying the same except for section four. And we get an attachment, um, to the inventory that, um, we shall like to insert in it rather. The reason for this is the interest penalty as a base is a one percent interest charge per month or fraction thereof will be calculated on the last day of the month following the tax due date on the unpaid portion of that response. So by saying it's the last day of the month, it is, it's power to do the same that we had inherited of putting one percent interest on the current taxes at the end of the month when actually the voters voted on the day after the due date. So that's why I started moving mine up as of the sixteen, you get a one percent. If we moved up the delinquent taxes to coincide with what we should be doing, it needs to be worded in here and that we never needed a calculate button. It calculates delinquent and current all on the sixteen after the due date rather than waiting to the end of the month. Because that's actually being very lenient for both situations, whether it's the delinquent or it's the current. You're being lenient by going to the thirtieth. So we would like it to reflect it before she actually starts hitting the button the same day I do. Because right now what we're doing is I'm doing the sixteen. I'm having to clear out all of hers, then she goes in on the thirty and clears out my payments and hers. It's way over together and it's the way that should be. So we would like to change the wording to read what you have attached. That says a one percent interest charge per month or fraction thereof will be calculated on the day following the tax due date on the unpaid portion. So in other words, it would be on the sixteen rather than the thirty of the month.
I move we accept this suggested new wording for collecting the, um, just beginning discharge interest on the day following the tax due date.
Do we have a second to that, Michael? Do we have any other suggestion? If not, all in favor of the, of the motion to amend the collective tax collection interest policy? That I opposed? Okay. Now, Bill, we have, uh, we, could we have one to sign and you give us one to sign downstairs? The one that I, the last one we had was signed here on June twenty. I'll bring two thousand.
I haven't redone it.
Okay, so when you.
No, no. I, you don't have it.
No, I don't because she didn't, for example, the wording.
Okay, so you, you, so you'll put it on the desk and then the secretary can change it. Sign it.
Or we would.
I will, yeah.
That's right, alright, okay. And now, Kim, you got, um, you're on the ballot at town meeting?
Ballot for town meeting, um, I just thought I needed to inform you that, um, with COVID last year, a lot of the towns which do mailing out their, they, they forfeited having a town meeting. Um, and they ended up sending ballots out if they still chose to, and registered voter. Um, you have the same option this year as a board up until the end of December to make that decision. Or need consent to every registered voter. Or we can keep it like it is. We're having our town meeting supposedly and we will just continue voting as normal. Come to the voting polls or request an absentee. So we go back to what we originally were before COVID. Um, but you have an option as a board of a descent amount to every single registered voter, which is five hundred and twenty-five ballots at a cost of, it'd be seventy-five cents to send them out and then others sixty-five cents probably to have them returned. We have to pay posting for both or do a little bit for those going back. So if I can make a suggestion, I am just as happy to move on like we always had in the past and not send to every registered voter, allow them requested ballot and, you know. And I, I felt you should be aware and you do have that option as a board.
Somebody wanna make a motion to go back to the old way or, or, or go to the new one?
Yeah, the original way or, yeah.
The original way.
Yeah. Somebody wanna make a motion for that?
I think you just did.
I just did.
Okay. Okay, second? Do we have any other discussion on that?
No, that's the way they're doing it.
Yeah, I agree. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we go back to the old way?
Okay.
Unless, unless there's a new variant, then what happens? All right, now, um, insurance, Kim?
Yeah, I need to recertify for our MVP insurance that we have now. If we so choose, as a board, that we can continue that. I don't wanna make the assumption that we had without real permission. Um, I gave you a copy, I think, a while back during the budget process. Um, MVP's, um, rates, um, I can tell you as a family, went up like thirty-four dollars a month on premiums. We have the Cross Blue Shield, they're pretty comparable, still stay at the platinum level. They are two hundred dollars more for premiums than what MVP is. So I believe as, um, those of us who are involved in the insurance, we're, we're happy with MVP. If you're okay with it, we just continue to stay with MVP. And I will re-sign with you.
Kim, could you just tell us what the total premium, let's say a family premium, uh, per month is? And then what the employee portion is? I know you just said it went up thirty-four dollars per month. But if you could just give us a sense of the context of what the, uh, family, um, the family premium is that we pay ninety-five percent of the employee.
The family plan total is two thousand two hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. And that's the premium is, and then to count and pays ninety-five percent of.
Ninety-five. And so just, you've got that right there instead of.
Yeah.
So the point, the employee portion would be?
If we cross Blue Shield, the family portion would be two thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars.
But what would the MVP employee portion of the premium be? The five percent?
That, like, well, I don't have my calculator and I'm shooting with my head and face the door.
Okay. Never mind.
Whatever, ninety-five.
That's right.
For tomorrow.
I just wanted us to get a sense of what.
It'll be five percent, a seven hundred, something like that.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven dollars.
So that's the, the employee portion?
Employees, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so.
So only make a motion to, um, to retain MVP as the health insurance for the town, don't hold?
Hold.
Second? If there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Kim, you have anything else?
Um, there's, we mentioned, um, a few, and I know this is probably leading to other things, but, um, kind of a timeline that Bill and I went over for, um, the budget along with, um, articles. And if you want John and Don and later have a discussion or if it was on your schedule. So December ninth, um, we're already talking about having a budget meeting, which, you know, now's the time.
Okay.
And at that budget meeting, I'm gonna give you an updated budget sheet. So I will put them in the box this tomorrow. Um, and we can, and we can tweak those. So they're gonna be from the figures of the last time we had a budget meeting. And then we can make our final decisions on those. December twentieth would be your next select for meeting. And hopefully anything that we tweak on the ninth, whether it be for review or additions to some, some like subsidiary, what have you. By the twentieth, I'll have two, before then, on the twentieth, I'm hoping that we can say that's it. That's our budget. And then what I can do is then I incorporate that into this eight pages into the town report. Then I also incorporate that, or go, go into an article. Then on January third, at the next select meeting, I think we'll have a couple of theory for the capital budget. And that needs to be worn in sort of one at a time. So that's why we thought January third, you're gonna put enough time to learn a couple of theory because that's a different timeline than a later selecting meeting. January thirteenth is when all articles need to be presented, whether it's outside articles requesting anything at a five percent signage or articles, any of the board to incorporate into the warning. And then the next fourth or fifteenth, I think is the seventeenth of January, I think that's a Monday. That would be the time in the fall's right, perfect timing to approve all articles and approve the actual warrant. So that will be the whole warrant that's going in the town report. That's what's gonna be on the ballot. That will be going on. Those are kind of the timelines Bill and I were moving forward, whatever, who led us.
The only thing I think, I'd like to set a time for the budget meeting on December ninth.
You're free to enter that. All depends on the day.
Well, the night they saw. I'm getting it right down.
What about ten o'clock?
Thursday, this Thursday.
This Thursday.
This Thursday.
How about the job, how about ten o'clock?
Yeah, I, I'd like to do it at ten because I, I had, I had a conflict at twelve o'clock, so.
Rich can't make it every day.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm done probably, I think.
So how, how early should you make it, Rich?
My last class on life is I get kids till two o'clock.
Could you do it at four o'clock?
Okay, four o'clock, four o'clock?
Yeah, let's do it four o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, that works. Kim, you need, you don't want any motions or anything, just.
No, just coming out.
You have anything else for us?
I think I did all come under with my name, but.
Okay. And there's, what, have anything else, Kim?
It's not, um.
Okay, now moving on. The, the next item is the budget for the hours of limits for the sheriff for July twenty-two to twenty-three.
On the last floor, there was a bill from the sheriff on that. I don't know if anybody sees my question mark when I put it in there. Well, it read hours that he had patrolled in South Wyndham. Well, I don't have, I don't have much of the door to that, we got charged for that.
And that was on the one that was for sixteen hours in total, Sean?
No, I think the total was five hours of three forty twenty, whatever the totals, but now it's just.
But I'm wondering, Bill, would that, that have anything to do with them confusing Wyndham Hill and Hopeville area and South Wyndham?
I wouldn't think so, but I, I don't know.
But the weird question, what are we gonna do with the sheriff? You wanna continue, you wanna stop, like you wanna increase it? Whatever you wanna do. And how effective is it?
They're increasing our hours a lot, you know?
Yeah.
I think at one time I've given you a sheet that, um, brought down the amount of hours because their rate went up compared to the forty-nine hundred that we pay.
Well, they have it, eight hours a week.
Eight hours a month, isn't it?
Nothing a month, so that's, 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 oh, seventy-two hours. I don't know, maybe she can hear that one.
Well, I, I took a look at the hours for the year and it averages out to about eight point four hours per month. But the hours per month are very erratic. They're, one month will have one hour, one month will have twenty hours. And, um, Kim and I were talking about this today. I think she had a great idea, if I can put words in the mouth, Kim, that we should just take the, um, what is it? The four oh eight times twelve that we spend on an annual basis, which is forty-eight ninety-five, isn't it, I think?
No.
And divide that by sixty. It turns out to be seven hours a month. And that we give up an hour a month, which we really, in a way, don't get. Um, and I wonder if along with that, we could ask for a minimum four hours or so per month. Uh, rather than this huge swing that we have in the sheriff's department.
See, we fall under the rate increase because we're less than two thousand hours.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion if that helps move things along, John, or Joe.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I did look that we, I did that we contracted with the sheriff's department for seven hours of service and hundreds of seven hours of service per month at the new rate of sixty hours for, uh, sixty dollars per hour. And then in addition to that, we asked for a minimum of four hours per month.
So that'd be four two hundred dollars.
So why the swing down? Why he, he just.
Good question.
I'm wondering, schedule with them, I'm wondering if that's something they can have. Why don't you?
I think they also try to make sure they get averaging out rich.
Bill?
I think, um, if I, if I could correct the motion, it should be to budget for seven hours a month with the intent to demand in the contract when it comes up for review in, in June. That'd be for, but you're not going into contract right now.
Okay.
If it, what you're talking about is what you're gonna budget for, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah, it is possible for an hour, an hour, sixty.
Sixty dollars an hour.
This contract is for two thousand twenty-three.
But we all sign this contract usually in June.
Well, usually it comes up in November.
No.
No.
It comes up in November in the last.
It usually comes up in June.
Yeah.
And the only, and then we signed it in June, signed it, the, the renewal in June, we signed it in July. We've signed it in August, depending on when you've gotten together because you've asked the sheriff to be here and he hasn't been here, so it's delayed the signing of the contract. But it's, it comes to us in May to be acted on in June every year.
But this letter is for two thousand twenty-three.
It's for, yeah, but what he means, beginning June of next year.
Right.
Yeah, so that, so what you're talking about is what you're gonna do next year in June? When do you get the contract? Are you gonna do, but what you're really talking about, are you gonna budget for sixty? At third, third, sixty at the eight hours you did have? Or what, what are you, what are you gonna do contract for?
Well, the motion is to do the seven hours.
Exactly, that's it.
At sixty dollars.
To budget, I think Bill's correction and my motion, and I, which I gladly accepted, to budget for seven hours per month at sixty dollars per.
And you want minimum of four hours.
With a minimum of four hours per month. So we have a little bit more smoothing of the service that we receive.
So that's an increase from forty-eight hundred to five thousand forty, is what you're saying.
No, it's a decrease.
Decrease for sure, dealing with the seven hours instead of eight hours.
Increase to forty.
It should turn out to be about the same. Let me just.
At sixty dollars, uh, per month is five thousand forty dollars.
About sixty dollars an hour.
By seven. If you're asking for seven hours a month, times twelve.
Okay, um, um. Let me just do the arithmetic again, maybe I'm accepting.
That's four hundred and twenty a month.
Yeah.
Times twelve is five thousand forty dollars. So it's an increase in the budget, about how I wanted.
No, 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 we didn't have an increase in the budget. Wait a second, let me just do this again. Right now, a monthly bill is four oh eight, am I correct?
Right.
Right. Okay, four oh eight. Okay, 408 times 12 is 4,896. And divided by 8 hours per month, right? No, is that so?
Sure.
No, no, I was just seeing what that would be. I was trying to make it come out of this thing.
Okay, what it is.
It's going to be a little longer.
So we're being a little over like that.
I'll just put in the budget.
If you want it the same, the motion should be, the budget will be the same.
Yeah.
With accepting the new per hour of the sheriff, but the budget won't change, that's all.
Yeah.
Right, let's just do it that way.
I understand this, so we contract with the 7 hours while we're asking if he has to be here before.
It's a minimum of 4.
Why the minimum of 4?
A minimum of 4, because. Just handing himself into it.
Or is he on special, some kind of special? I, well, don't get it.
I didn't want to hear.
I mean, if we're asking them to do something and instead of paying them extra, then they're taking the time from someplace else, I understand that.
It'd be nice if we could get a straight 7 hours per month. Well, he says it here, only increases on the yard rate is because of the water state activity requirement. A significant portion of that has increased the yardage rate. And he's trying to find ways to reduce.
More things.
Well, if you want to keep the budget the same, just keep it the same, it's no longer that. Then you have less, you have less coverage, that's what the board wants.
And I think that the company is about 7 hours.
So are they pretty decent, Bill? When they ask me to do something, do they come out and help us? Is that how this works?
The first argument is very helpful on specific, on specific things, yes.
All right. It just said we'd contract something, by the way, and that puts you contract for that, what we should get. Like, if you're saying it's a flexible thing because they're, where you're volatile and we need them, then that's fine.
What Susanna said is, Brian, they spend more time here some months than less time here others. So what she is asking is that we ask them that at the very least of those 7 hours, they don't give us 14 one month and 0 the next month. That there's always at least 4 hours. That's what she's asking.
Because the contract states an average.
So that could be 4 hours at 2 o'clock in the morning. And when we need something important, they're going to say.
Times up.
Times up, that's it, yeah. So the relationship works now, it might, it could still, might be rational, my chair.
Well, the question, if you want to keep the budget the same, you can't. You gotta, if you want to keep the contract the same, the budget's got to go up.
Why don't we, I think Rich makes a very good point. Why don't we, for now, because it's budget purposes, just to keep things moving along? Let's just say we want to level set the budget for fiscal year '23. We can talk about the details of the contract when we get it from the sheriff in June. How would you feel about that, Kim?
I don't know.
How does the board feel about just level setting the budget?
He's fine.
Yeah, I don't think I have a problem with that.
Can you add that for me to think? When he's, when he has to go get prisoners, pick up prisoners at the prison and take them to court? If he could, if he's going to Springfield, he comes here and spends time here in the mornings, he doesn't charge that. He's on his way to Springfield, he doesn't charge that. It's when he comes here or another sheriff comes here specifically for the purpose of spending time here that they charge.
That's good to know.
Well, I think that's kind of my point, if the relationship's working. Oh, okay, I think.
Well, I mean, if you want to level fund, that's what you're going to do. If you want to accept the same contract, you're going to pay more money. That's what you have to decide, so. If you want to level fund it, that's what's on the floor. If you have any other discussion?
There is not any margin on the floor.
No. You made a motion, I think, well, Suzanne made a motion, Bill corrected. So let's, you want to level fund the budget, that's basically what I guess.
Okay.
And you want to have a minimum of 4 hours.
No, I'm taking that out because we can discuss that at a later time. It seems controversial now, for all the right reasons, all the right reasons.
You just want to level fund.
Level fund for now because it's for the budget.
And that's the motion, is to level fund the fire.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Are there any other discussions, or anybody? If not, it won't be fair to say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? No, okay. All right, so the sheriff gets less money this year. Cemetery, do you have the deed that needs to be signed?
Um, I let Kim handle it.
Well, did you bring her up, Bill?
Yeah, she had.
You have the deed, so it's a code. There's no board, is there, you suggest?
No, it's under the management. Cemetery wants that, I have so.
There's a language that we should have listened to. That's all you have to say? Who's going to be here for the Christmas fair? It's on the agenda about using the road and having the Christmas next Saturday. Somebody came in here, they wanted to talk to us about what they were going to do and give us the planning, and I don't see any need for it.
Well, they sent Bill an email on November 29th. And they gave the complete schedule of events in that email and noted that there are no road closures or cones needed for any of the activities. And so if Bill is looking like.
I never saw that.
Yeah, you're wrong here, Joe. I know that, I know that.
Last thing about you guys?
We need to fund this local cyprian, it needs about 35 people.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's here, but anyway.
That's the one I sent to everybody to tell them that there was an event going on. I didn't know that that was the request.
Yeah.
No, they, I think that what Angela, and that's very understandable.
That's, I took it as, I didn't actually go to the party.
No.
Because I was told that somebody was going to be here.
That's what I was told.
Yeah.
So I was expecting that person to be here, that's why we put it on the agenda.
Understood. So I think that Angela, there's probably a little miscommunication and Angela thought that this email would have sufficed for that purpose because she was very clear that there are no road closures or cones needed. And that's the topic that the select board is usually interested in, what will be the use of the town roads.
But also, also is the fire department, the fire squad, is that?
Oh, yes, I mean, the portion, a good portion of the sale has to do with the firefighter trees. Santa Claus is going to come on a fire engine. The rescue squad and the fire department are very, very involved in this, in this event and are fully informed about it.
Okay.
And also, I just wanted to point out that our logging contract for the village park, I don't think we're going to have any logging activity by then, right?
I don't know, but that's, I have no idea.
Because the contract does provide for no use of chippers and no trucks on the weekend, which is really, the parks committee is to be commended for having such a considerate contract for those of us who live in a town this, in some level thrives on tourism.
Okay, so we don't have this, everyone, okay, there's no, there's no we agenda, there's nothing. Everybody's happy that it's going to be done, okay? Eric, you're in that planning commission. What's going on? When are we going to get a chair? When are we going to have bill of vacancies and all that kind of stuff?
Hello? I'm here, but three other people aren't.
So what do we do back there?
Two people emailed me and said that they could come, Matt and Ben. Chris, maybe on.
Chris. Hello, Chris.
I'm happy to get together anytime we have some kind of consensus to have a meeting. Now, we were going to do something with Ben's Google hideaway group kind of gathering and he said we could make public. Bill pointed out that that kind of a publicly accessible remote operation of a public body like the planning commission was no longer legal by the state standards and we had to have a person of the group physically present in a place for the public to come to join the meeting.
That's correct.
And so that sort of stopped everything. I don't know why, but I got no response from the other members exactly to try and say, okay, well, that's fine, we'll do that, nobody did.
All you have to do is use this room here, have one person set up, and have a Zoom. Then you guys can conduct it and let the public know. I mean, it's very simple.
Yeah, I, I am sufficiently computer literate that I wouldn't want to be responsible for making this work.
Well, we can, we can, no, the mechanics, the question is, you need to do something about it. And how it works, we can deal with. But more importantly, you don't have a chair, you have a missing person. So how do we, how do we get the planning commission back? It's not our, it's not our job, but it is our concern for the town.
Sure.
Because the planning commission has other things to do and should be doing other than writing town plans. There's a lot of other things that they should be doing on a regular monthly basis. So how do we proceed this? I mean, what do we do, Eric? I'm not taking it on to you, I just don't, I mean, just, we need to move on. We need to get something here.
I'm willing to entertain suggestions. I don't, I'm one person, not a chair, and the other kind of have to, you know, raise their hand and say, let's do something.
I mean, do we have to, do we have to? I don't know if we can legally do it, but I mean, can we just terminate and start the planning commission again? I mean, I don't, I don't know what you're doing.
Chris, I think would like to address it. And Chris, if you turn your camera on now, then you could be seen.
Chris, help us out, please.
Well, we are down one member currently. We're a five-member commission. We've only got four members and no chair, so we need to reorganize. It's going to be our first order of business. I suggest we go back to the regular scheduled monthly meetings and proceed from there. And then perhaps on a rotating basis, one of the four of us will sit in the town hall if we can't physically make it, the others can't physically make it. But I, you know, we can try and start it up.
Just remember the GIA is your Tumblr.
Next month.
We've lost him.
We lost him.
We lost you, Chris, I know that.
All right, are you able to hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I just suggest, I suggest we resume the monthly meetings, warn. If we can warn a meeting for either this month or next month. We get a quorum, we'll go ahead, we'll nominate a fifth member for appointment. And then once the select board appoints, we have a full board, we'll go ahead and reorganize and hopefully we can begin to move forward.
Sounds good to me. Is everybody happy?
We need to, does the select board appoint the members that they're down on in the planning commission?
We appoint the planning commission, yeah. They make the recognition.
Oh, okay.
Or we can make our recognition, either way.
Yeah, go either way.
Either way.
Can they find the body or is it this month? Can they find the person to do it?
I don't know the answer to that.
We have one person that's interested in doing that job right now.
But they don't have anybody off the chair at the planning commission, apparently. So they're kind of leading this, I think.
I think you let them find the other person and then find out if that.
Not leading, maybe come up with a chair.
Yes. Find the prisoner. If Chris is right, then they should call their meeting, get themselves organized, and then kind of move on. Really, all this is just that we need to have a planning commission in the town. We really don't have one functioning properly, so. Okay, Chris? If you would, if you would talk to Eric or somebody, take the lead and set some meeting times and figure out if you need help with the Zoom meeting, let Bill know, we'll figure out something.
Okay, I will work with Bill and the other members of the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Committee reports, the cemetery committee, there's nothing to report unless you have something.
The only thing on that is the gentleman was supposed to get back to us at Thanksgiving.
He never did.
When he came up, he never did. So I don't know if we should follow up on that, had Bill written the letter.
Who was supposed to get that?
Bill, Bill, we met, John and I met, Bill met. He gave, he didn't give his permission to do test pits. He had to talk to his wife and he said, we were supposed to meet over Columbus weekend or whatever. And he said, no, let's do it Thanksgiving when he's up here. He never, he never approached us, so it's kind of a dead issue at the moment. We can send a letter to him again, but. Yes, Ted.
Also, whether the cemetery, well, this is an hour later date, but you want to consider whether you are going to appoint a sexton and so tighten it to, for me, moving into the budget. So I know we're working on the budget on December 9th, so I don't know what point you guys want to discuss and go now whether there's going to be a study for a sexton, if you're going to have one at all, or if the commissioner and yourself wants to take over the cemetery.
Well, we can discuss that, I guess, at the budget meeting there apparently, tonight. But Dave, you had a question?
Yeah, I saw the flag was still up in the cemetery.
The what?
The flags, they're still up in the cemetery.
Okay, that's all supposed to be removed, but I look over the door, so. We'll, we'll make sure that that gets taken care of.
I have a question or a concern, more of a concern. Austin's not doing cemetery cleanups because we fired Steven. Bill, did you write a letter to Austin telling him that he has, has not had that job?
No, I talked to him the other day and he understood. And he had a conversation with Danny. Unfortunately, that's the way he got the word. But he was fine with the fact that we need, was not to be involved in the cleanup because he was busy otherwise in any case. So I did not write him a letter, but I did talk with him.
It would have been nice to have had some acknowledgement of his service and maybe an apology to the way he had.
I apologized to abuse them or the fact that the town had never, had never.
I think it was just an oversight.
It was an oversight, but I didn't think of it, so. But if anybody knows of any people, persons who want to donate land for use of the cemeteries, apparently we only have three or four more years of plots available. So it's becoming important that we find a suitable location to expand our cemetery. We looked at a couple sites, but doesn't seem to be panning out. So if there is any, anybody knows of anything or any people want to donate or sell that's suitable for us, let us know.
We still have a little one on the chest that wrote pastures that.
Yeah, yeah.
See nothing more on the other, this is your goal?
No, they've never done anything with it. They were supposed to send a letter of intent and it never happened, so. Assuming that's probably not going to happen either.
And Joe, did I understand you correctly that with respect to the segment, we're going to.
And Joe, did I understand you correctly that with respect to the segment, we're gonna wait until the budget meeting decide whether we're gonna put a budget item in there?
No, we can discuss, if you wanna do the section, if you wanna cover that tonight, you can. It's not on the agenda.
The budget meeting's fine, I just, I mean.
We could, we could do it at the budget meeting.
Yeah. And then if we decide to put it in, we can come up with a job description.
We need to volunteer, that's the problem. Either we do it or we get somebody to do it.
Is it volunteer or pay position?
Well, I mean, somebody's gotta volunteer to do it, that gets.
Okay, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy, I didn't hear what you asked about.
What did I ask?
When you asked you about some business that was pending and Joe sent the letter intending.
About the Fisher family.
The Fisher family.
Donating man.
Yeah, that we looked at.
Yeah, you guys looked at it and wanted.
Right, but she was, we had asked her to give us a letter of intent because it's involved in a.
It was still in the works.
Okay.
And so, and the works again.
Okay, but it's in the, you know, it's, it's a state issue. So she just, you know, the state has to approve all that. So there was no sense us doing any further work until we got a letter of intent. That was the, that was the understanding. And Dave says they're still in the works, so. Private committee? Park committee? I, the only thing I know about the park committee is that they've filed the application and they're waiting. So hopefully, they get it and we can move forward.
And how about the lawn?
I, 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 we had the last conference was, Bill, they were going to check out the site for logging, but we didn't have a date yet to be done.
Tim Morton, he didn't give a date. He simply said the forester, Tim Morton is the town forester, said that he didn't have a date, but he just wanted to make sure everything was marked before they started.
Right, and it's marking that.
And so I can act, I can ask him if he has a date. I think he, he's very responsible and he'll come back to us. He'll tell us when he starts.
Well, Alan Stan sent me a memo and he said that since he is no longer involved with the select board or whatever, that he didn't wanna be the contact. And I, I wrote back to Alan and I think copied the pin. And I said, if you need to contact me for the, for the logging or anything, then I had not even seen anything from the committee. Personnel committee, I guess we'll talk about that in a minute, so I don't have to worry about that. Billings committee, anything new?
The, we had a conversation, Kim and I, with the, and unfortunately Kathy couldn't make it, with the architect regarding the elevator. They have very preliminary plans, the lula site between those two windows and downstairs, actually in front of that, the window that's to the left of the door. And, and how they were going to do that. We talked to them about the closet and if they could add, since they're taking the closet out that's right there in the hallway, if they could add it between the stairwell over here. He said he could look at that. He said that the back stairs here, that that could be cut off because there's no immediate reason to do those. And the bathroom, he's looking at, at the bathroom by, and he is considering, well, it isn't handicapped accessible now by about six inches of the circle. And he is looking at tearing out the wall with the sliding door so that the entry to the bathroom from the post office and from here would be directly from the hallway or directly to the post office. The, and there's, so there'd be a lock on the inside on location. And so that's, otherwise, we'd have to go back into negotiation with the federal government on the post office if we take some space. And going the other way, we'd have to move all the plumbing, the plumbing for the bathroom, the plumbing for the, for the back room. It would be really offensive. He thinks the easiest fix is just that wall. We move, take that wall out, it's then handicapped accessible. And he said the reason he would do it now is that though it met the criteria at the time it was built, if with ADA, it isn't, it isn't a matter of some bureaucrat telling you that it's right. If it, and that it's okay because you're not touching it, therefore you don't have to fix it. If someone complains, you have to fix it. And that could cost us money in the future when we don't have plans to do it. So what he would like to do in sum, it would be the shaft of the lula, the light utility light, limited access elevator and the ramp, the closet, and then doing something about the bathroom.
Okay. And if he pumps, does it still back order?
He pumps every time I talk to him. I haven't talked to him in about three or four weeks, but he kept telling me he'll call me. But every time I talk to him, it's our own back order.
On the wastewater, I have the final draft of the Tyne Bond contract, which I haven't had a chance to look at yet, but all the stuff going on. But there, there is a development that we have talked to Tyne Bond about. Julie Vianney had the wonderful surprise that she had to put a new septic system in and cost her $84,000. And it's, it's not her doing, it's what the state told her to do and how it had to be done. And I don't understand all the details, but it's some kind of a modular thing. And apparently, the thing that she put in can service other homes. So she talked to the woman up there at the.
Lynette.
Yeah, Lynette. And she said that, to talk to Tyne Bond, because there's a possibility instead of, if, if the town approved the wastewater project, so that we're a long way from that. But instead of having spending $2 million on wastewater field, you might be able to spend $500,000 for the series of these pods around the village. So, so this is, this is something that, that's, you know, is gonna be talked about with Tyne Bond and, and with Lynette and all the rest of the stuff. So that's, that's where we, you know, nothing is cast in stone, but apparently there's new technology. Yes, Dave?
I didn't think that I was talking about that. The door, when we talked to Tyne Bond. If you look back in history, when I went on the board about, you know, little septic systems linking around town.
But the technology now is available, apparently. I don't know whether it was available then or not.
And it has.
Now it is.
It was.
The people from Tyne Bond and also the family, Lynette.
So that's about where that's from. The personnel committee?
So Joe, where the.
Hang on, Mr. Lee, did you say you had a timeline or a contract?
We have a contract that we have to look at, discuss and send to the attorneys. There is a, there is a timeline somewhere.
There is any timeline.
Well, it was a, it was a, not a timeline, it was a. There's no timeline, but they have a, a schedule where, they, they can't start anything now because of the weather. Whether, whether the contract was signed today or tomorrow, nothing can happen.
Nothing can happen until the town gets the vote.
This is the, this is the study. The study can start because the study.
And has the money been approved by the state?
That's the other problem. The, the money is not, has not been approved yet.
So you're gonna contract with something that you don't have any money for?
No, we're not starting the contract until the money is available. But you have to negotiate the contract on, to make sure that it's right. And when, when the funds come, then you sign the contract, obviously. But they, even if, even if the funds are here tomorrow and the contract was signed, they, they can't start until, until at least mid-spring, April, May because of the ground orders and testing that they have to reduce. So believe it or not, believe me, nobody is gonna sign a contract where the money is not in, in their hands yet.
And that's a public document there, is it?
Well, yes, the contract is a public document once it's got signed, I guess.
No, but even if it's not.
We go with that, sure. The other thing that was brought to my attention by Lynette, there's a, there's this pending issue with the school, with the water and the other house or two that have contaminated wells. And she had encouraged the board, and we haven't discussed it, this is something that she encouraged. That we extend the contract with Tyne Bond to do a water study as well as a wastewater study because there could be, there's, there's a lot of money available to do this study now. Not, not so much to put it in, to do the study. And if the, if state and federal people come that, back with some suggestions on this, how do we improve this pollution of the water in the school, then you would have to, the money would not be available and you might have to do the study on your own. So I don't know how valid that is, but that was a suggestion she made. And that's something I think we need to talk to Tyne Bond and we may need to talk to Lynette to see indeed if that money is available. But she, he, she's indicating that there's a lot of money out there that's free and you should take advantage of it. Now, I, I don't know if I agree with her, but that's where we are, so.
Joe, speaking of money available for these kind of projects, as you know, there's an influx of funding from ARPA for water management that we have unstuck villages like ours. And it's called the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. And you have to apply by filling out an application to be on what's called a priority list. And I'm just wondering what our plan is for filling out that application to be on a priority list so we're considered to be one of the villains that would be recipients of this ARPA funding. There was a deadline of December 1st for fiscal year '22 funding, which we missed that deadline unless there is already a priority list application in the works for Grafton.
Well, we are, we have, we have a priority for the study, to get the money for doing the study. That we do have.
Specifically, you have to fill out a priority list application. My question is, has the town of Grafton filled out the priority list application?
I have not.
Okay, I can just put that down as an action item?
I will check with her, yes.
Yeah, it's called the priority list application. Thank you.
Okay, you wanna, you wanna do personnel now?
So Sam, I'd like to postpone the personnel for the next meeting for two reasons. One, Rich just got on the board, I have to give him two weeks to go over it. And the second reason is, I'd like to see the personnel plan in a one format so it's easier to read and understand. The way it is now, you've gotta read the current and then go back into the other to understand it.
You don't.
Yeah, and, and helps.
This sheet and Kathy and I have a plan here to go over this in a very understandable way.
It would be much better for you in one format, great amount of changes made. I don't know how to do it, but Bill's done it and, and some of his things. It's much easier to read. I don't know if anybody else agrees with that, but.
Well, the only thing, the only thing, Suzanne, is every time we've had, and this is over the last six years, five years, every time we had updated ordinance or anything like that, we always had the, the draft with red and so that you could look at here and you could see that the bullet for level one, this was taken away, this was added, rather than going to one thing to the other.
With all due respect, Joe, we are perfectly prepared tonight to do that with the select board.
Well, I had to do it three times to just take hours to do it.
No, we're not, you don't.
I've been through this quite a few times.
It'll take us 20 minutes.
It's just mind boggling to keep going back and forth. Whereas like Joe said, it was like that, it'd be so much easier and you wouldn't have to spend the time going over it.
So I think what you're asking is for a different format for the presentation board. I don't know how Kathy feels about this.
Well, we gave you the current, we gave you the draft on the draft. We've underlined the changes. On this page, if you read it, you've got the section, the page from 2002, from 216, from 218 and 219 current, what was changed. It's right on one each paper.
But then you're gonna go back through it and read it, whereas there was some.
And we're planning.
You have to pull it right out.
And John, we are prepared to go through that tonight. We had asked for a special meeting so that we could spend some time on this. We knew that the, we knew that the select board agenda tonight would be really full. I think we should go ahead and get this done. I really do. Kathy and I are prepared to do it. I don't think it'll take us, I think it'll take us 20 minutes.
It's whatever the board wishes.
And we'll be happy to give us their copies back here. We can definitely give Rich a copy. We don't have to approve it tonight, but I think we should go through it.
Fine, whatever, Richard's.
Yeah, whatever the board wants.
Well, that's good done. It worked a long time on it in March.
Let me just ask Richard, costume.
Well, are there, are there copies for the other people here?
I, I mean, I only have two extra copies. I had no idea there'd be this many people here, but. I'm glad there are so many people here, don't misunderstand it. And no way of anticipating.
Well, why don't we try this and see how long it takes? I was prepared to have a long meeting, but that's not an issue.
Okay. So Kathy's gonna keep things off, I think.
Well, we started in March when Suzanne and I were on the committee, the personnel. One of our tasks was to look at the personnel policy and we did. We got all the notes from Bill, also the notes from Robin Sterns, who Lynette had a meeting to return, wanting over some changes that'll happen in 2018 and 2019. So, and along with doing all the fixtures in the background, we interviewed the employees, we interviewed Ken and we interviewed Bill several times. And drafted what we have in front of you tonight. We also had advice from VLCT. And this policy is primarily based from VLCT, from 2002 all the way up to present draft. So if you look at this sheet, and we're just, we're gonna do it by section and look at what's underlined, what's changed. What, basically, the edits that we did make was to clarify so there's no confusion when someone's handed a personnel policy, be it the employee, the, the, the board or the employee, they understand it, there's no confusion. So that's what we're gonna work in on.
Okay, great. So now that you've got the proposed personnel policy, that's the line label of December 6th, December 2021, that's what you should be looking at. And you have this, this, of the former policies, 2002, 2016, 2018, in the three columns per. If you'll have these two sheets out in front of you, you'll be able to follow everything. Okay, so let's just start with page three of the policy. And you'll see under section one, title and authority, the change made was the Personnel Committee consists of two select board members appointed by the Select Board to organize a community in the town. That was for clarification. And we also added that elected official sign addendum B for benefits associated covered in sections 18 through 27, so it was specific what the elected official was signing up for.
And we added that only because the employees didn't know what the addendums were. They never got them. And that's where we added it.
Right.
So elected official pays the old gold for benefits?
Sections 18 through 27, and they sign up for it via addendum B.
And they have to work.
Okay, elected official is. Okay, elected official is Kim, full-time elected official.
Michelle's the elected official.
And we're going to get to the part-time, we're going to get to the part-time coverage here in just a minute, John.
I understand it, but how many hours do you have to be?
That's in here, we're going to go through that step by step.
Yeah.
All right, so let's look at section two, persons covered. Section two, persons covered, what the underlined portion says, "For purposes of this policy, a full-time employee is an employee who works at least 32 hours per week on a regular and continuing basis." We're on page three, section two. A part-time employee covered by this policy works less than 32 hours per week. Now, in section three, there are no changes, and section four are no changes. Section five, no changes. Section six, no change. Section seven, hours of service, page five. Regular work week for persons employed at the town hall or other town offices, the work week shall be 40 hours with 30 minutes paid, time allowed for lunch, unless otherwise set by the select board. Unless the highway supervisor and select board agree otherwise in a separate written agreement, the regular work week for persons employed for the road crew shall be 40 hours with 30 minutes paid allowed for lunch.
So, so Kim has to work 40 hours a week, is that what you're saying?
No, she can work 32 hours a week, a full-time position.
She said the right order.
So this is to correct, and this is to correct, a contradiction in the 2018 plan, where it says, "Persons employed at the town office, at the town hall, shall be 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, with 30 minutes paid time allowed for lunch." 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, is a 40-hour week.
I just want to understand it, that a full-time employee works, that the work is 32 hours.
That's right.
Then a regular work week for persons employed at the town hall is 40 hours.
And you can see under hours of service, the very first line is, "A full-time employee is one who works at least 32 hours per week." It's at least 32 hours per week. Now, we can change that, but I just want to point out that in the 2018 policy, the one that was approved by the Select Board in 2018, the town hall work week is 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. I think this gives the town the flexibility to set these hours the way they need to, given the number of our various employees.
So who's going to, so in Kim's situation, who sets her time to arrive and leave?
For Kim, as an elected official, Kim does, nobody does. We set the, this policy, with the exceptions of section 18 through 27, which Kim signs an addendum for, applies to Grafton Town employees. Kim is not an employee, she's an elected official.
And she sets her own hours?
She, Kim, I'm not familiar, we have not studied the elected official totally. We've studied just what applies to employees.
Right, I can set my own hours with approval, working with the board, but that's 18 through 27, what applies to me, anything outside of that doesn't apply. But this makes more sense, since Bill's not an 8 to 4 person, he has set his hours to be 8 to 4:30, so that he can get his 34 hours and within four days. This makes more sense because people are more flexible.
So, so Kim, yours has to equal 40 hours and get the benefits?
No.
No, no, no.
I want to just repeat that for purposes of this policy, a full-time employee is an employee who works at least 32 hours per week. And the benefits, the eligibility for those, as we step through them, John, you will see they are for full-time employees, and we're going to get to that.
I have a question.
Under, under, under persons covered, a full-time employee is an employee who works at least 32 hours per week. Kim is an elected official.
Dan, you have a question?
About the hours for the pilot.
Yeah?
Our hours have always been 6 to 2.
Mm-hmm.
For the 40 hours, you're not going to list what our regular work hours are?
I'm happy to do that, if you'd like for us to.
I just didn't have them in there.
6 to 2?
Is what our regular hours have always been.
Why is it that you want 40 hours for the employees of the town hall when no one works 40 hours?
Tell me, Joe, because in 2018, was anybody working 40 hours?
Pardon?
In 2018, were people working 40 hours? Then why does the policy state, "Persons employed at the town hall shall be 8 to 4, Monday through Friday"?
I don't know, but, but.
But, you guys put it in, we didn't put it in.
This is just, if it's wrong, we need to change it.
But as far as we are concerned, this was the policy and we stated it more clearly.
It probably never got picked up on because it was to be 40 hours in the town hall.
Well, the other.
But it's very clear that you can be a full-time employee and work 32 hours is the minimum amount you work if you're a full-time employee. Beyond that, the hours are flexible.
Okay, the last phrase, where, how?
Unless otherwise set by the Select Board.
Correct.
Then that would be the Select Board considering a motion, passing a motion, and that would be it, the way the Select Board acts. Okay.
But I think it should be clear, be clear by an action of the Select Board or something like that.
Okay. By an action of the Select Board?
A vote?
Okay, by an action of the Select Board, okay. Okay, so can we move on? Page six, no, no changes, section 11, no changes. Section 11 is alcohol and drug use. This is a section that we changed completely so that it is the VLCT recommended language. Section 12, we changed section 12 to tobacco use, so that it refers specifically to the state statute that covers it, the state law prohibits, et cetera. In section 13, performance evaluation, in this section, we simply updated the language so that it reads, "Employees will participate in job performance evaluations annually in order to discuss their performance goals and related issues with interim reviews scheduled quarterly." That's a change we made there. Performance evaluations will be scheduled in the fall of the year. The results of such evaluations will be discussed with the employee. So that's the change we made in performance evaluations. It's pretty much the same it was in 2018, but with the adding of the quarterly review and updating the language.
Do you want to have a quarterly review then?
The performance evaluation will be done on an annual basis.
Yeah.
But there will be quarterly reviews, so that people can be informed about how they're doing so far in the year, and not just informed once per year.
Excuse me, Suzanne?
Sure.
I'm sorry, but back on to section 12, what about these cigarettes?
The tobacco maker? Yeah, it's all, it's all, the tobacco is mentioned in there. The light, the tobacco product, and the, and the hereby from given its employees use of tobacco in any form, including electronic. Okay, so now on page nine. Okay, now on page nine, there's no change in 14, 15, or 16. On page 10, there's no change in section 17. And now we get to section 18, and you can really follow along with this by looking at your comparison sheet. First of all, we received a request during our interviews to include the retirement benefits in this portion of the policy, which we have done. And we were asked to define eligibility in each section where eligibility applies, so that anyone picking up this policy and wondering if they're eligible for any particular benefit would be able to read it, write in association with that benefit itself, instead of having to go back and see if they're an eligible person. So in healthcare, you'll see that eligibility are full-time employees and eligible elected officials who work full-time, and their spouses and eligible dependents. Full-time elected officials shall assign, shall sign addendum B. So this makes it possible for Kim to have access to Grafton, Town of Grafton, healthcare benefits. She's full-time. Now, I just want to point out that "and their spouses and eligible dependents" is leaving the policy the same as it was in 2018, where full-time employees, elected officials, spouses and eligible dependents were voted on by the Select Board to be included in eligibility. To our knowledge, full-time employees and full-time elected officials were the eligible people in 2016, and the spouses and eligible dependents were added in 2018. Okay? For the retirement benefit, employees and elected officials who work 24 or more hours per week and 1,040 or more hours in a year. This eligibility standard is set by the Vermont Municipal Employees Retirement System, and it must be followed because Grafton is a participant and veevers. For holiday leave, eligibility is full-time employees and eligible elected officials. In holiday leave, as you know, because it's already been approved by the Select Board, we added Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day. Vacation leave, we only added the eligibility, full-time employees, unless altered by the Select Board or new hire based on years of relevant job experience, eligible job, eligible elected officials. So the Select Board can act and give a person with career experience who have earned vacation leave in a previous job, by separate agreement, can afford that person additional vacation leave. Number 21, sick leave. Eligibility is again defined by state law, and the law specifically is what's known as the earned sick time law. And what Kathy and I did was to make sure that our policy is consistent with that, the provisions of that statute. So the eligibility for sick leave is any employee or elected official who is 18 years of age or older, works an average of 18 or more hours per week, and is expected to work more than 20 hours in a 12-month period. Newly hired and employed under a vacationary period are eligible.
You mean 40 weeks, not hours? Mine says 20 weeks.
I think that is 20 weeks.
Yeah, you can add it.
It is 20 weeks.
Okay.
For clarification about sick leave on vacation, we, we.
Oh, thank you, Kathy.
We put down in, in full letter, requires for vacation should be submitted to the employee supervisor as soon as possible, but not less than one week in advance of the requested time off.
Thank you, Kathy. We, during our interviews, we received feedback that there's variation in whether or not and how employees request vacation time and comp time. So what we did is we just bolded in the policy itself that you have to ask your supervisor. Not a.
Do I have to submit a letter to the board for my time?
You don't have to submit a letter, Dan, you just will figure out a process for you to do that. But yeah, the Bill needs to think, we need to figure out a process for Bill and for you because technically the Select Board is your supervisor. Okay, the letter C, which is underscored in definition, which gets a correction from the wording in 2018. And in sick leave, state personal time for eligible part-time employees will be prorated. And that, that's only in there because there is, this is expected to work more than 20 hours in a 12-month period, according to the state law. Okay, moving right along, on page 14, you'll see again that we bolded, employees must provide notice to their supervisor as soon as practical, their intent to use sick time and the expected duration of the employees absent.
That's earned sick time.
Earned sick time, thank you. Okay, and now then, no changes on page 15, 16, and now we get to overtime and compensatory time off, which is on the other side of your comparison sheet. And today, Kim and I had a final review of this section to compare it to the way this comp time is currently administered. As Kathy mentioned, Kathy and I sat down with Kim and with Michelle, so she could have a deeper understanding of exactly how comp time is calculated by the Town of Grafton. And I'm happy to say that, Kathy, you want to say what we found is the findings of our?
I can do it.
Okay, the, the, we found that the administration of this policy on the part of employees and on the part of our administrator is absolutely consistent with the policy as it is written. We think it's actually pristine. And so, I'm just going to hand out the revised sheet. Kathy, expand these. The bottom line of what Kathy and I are recommending here is really only one change in the way comp time is provided for to our employees. And I just want to step you through this with Kathy's help. So I want you to take a look at the comparison sheet, the back where it says pay plan, overtime and comp plan, overtime.
Can I go pop this so people have it?
Yeah, there's more copies, there's more copies.
You want me to pour this out?
There's more copies. Okay, while Bill's handing that out, I'm just going to go over this first part, which is, in our interviews, we received questions about eligibility. And we received questions specifically about what does it mean to be a non-exempt employee and eligible for overtime and comp time compared to an exempt employee who is not eligible for overtime and comp time? And so we provided the specific definition from the Federal Labor Standards Act, so that anyone reading this policy would understand the difference between a non-exempt employee and an exempt employee, and keeping in mind that overtime and comp time are only available to non-exempt employees. Essentially, a non-exempt employee is an hourly employee. Essentially, a non-exempt employee is an hourly employee with no one reporting to him or her, and is exempted from the FLSA overtime regulation. And exempt employees have a relatively high level of responsibility to kind of keep the business running. So, moving on then to the actual change we made. So what Kathy and I decided is that the comp time benefit is very highly valued by our employees. It means a lot to them to receive comp times. And therefore, what we did, what we decided is, after studying the administration and the findings and talking to employees, to only make one change in the way comp time is administered now. And I'm just going to step you through this because it's so important to understand that we are codifying the current practice. The current practice was pretty much instituted in the 2018 personnel policy. Comp time is earned at a rate of one and a half hours for each hour worked in excess of 40 hours, at the rate of one hour for one hour in excess of 32 hours, up to 40 hours for employees working at town hall, worked in any work week. The definition of how you calculate overtime, it includes sick leave, vacation, comp time, and paid holidays, taken during the same work week, shall be counted as time worked for the purpose of computing overtime. And that, as you can see on your comparison sheet, has evolved over the years. In 2002, when comp time was first introduced to the town, the employees had to allow, was the work that's known as actual work, which is a bit of a misnomer because, but nonetheless, you had to actually be working. In 2016, paid holidays counted in the calculation of overtime. In 2018, the, the definition was changed to include sick leave, vacation, comp time, and paid holidays, taken during the same work week, shall be counted as time worked for computing overtime. Employees can earn comp time up to a maximum balance of 80 hours in one calendar year. Again, this language was changed from 2018, from 2016 in 2018. In 2016, the comp time shall not exceed 80 hours. In 2018, may accrue a maximum of 80 hours of comp time in total. Now, here's the change that Kathy and I are recommending. Earned comp time must be used or paid by the end of the calendar year, no carryover. So currently, in the administration of our comp time, employees can use their comp time and be paid for it as overtime, or they can carry over an amount to the following year. Kathy and I are recommending going back to the way the policy was administered in 2002 and in 2016, and saying that accumulated time must be used by the end of the calendar year, no carryover. And then, within any, a single pay period, an employee who reaches a maximum balance of 80 hours of earned comp time will be paid overtime for additional overtime hours, or, and this is the way the policy is concurrently administered, an employee may choose to use earned comp time such that their balance is reduced and replenish their comp time up to the 80-hour balance limit.
Suzanne, I've got a problem with that.
Okay.
You're getting away from the 80 then. If they take 20 hours, it is 60, but they can replenish it, so that makes it 100. And then it goes on and on.
That's right.
And I'd like to try to get away from that because it bothers with their work schedule during the course of the year. You've got people off from work and when you need them working.
So, just to be very clear, the replenishment factor was, is part of the current policy, and is part of the way this proposed policy is the codification of that. So, John, I think what you're saying is that you may want to consider another option than replenishment.
Right. I'd rather stay at the 80, and if they go over that, they get paid for it.
Okay. I think if the select board would like to, if the select board would like to consider that option, I think that's certainly within our purview to do so, John. Would you like to make a motion? Would you please want it? Would you like to...
What we should do here, go through this whole thing, and then bring it to the next meeting, and forward it, so we all have a chest to play with.
Sure. That's a great idea.
Well, I don't have a guess at that, but I have a guess at that.
That's, no, I think that's great.
I mean, even for Rich, Rich is, he's kind of been baptized by fire here.
Yeah, right.
Yes, Bill?
I think that first sentence of that bullet point, employees may earn comp time up to a maximum balance of 80 hours in one calendar year, isn't, it isn't what the policy thing goes on to say. You're not limited to earning 80 hours in one calendar year. So either you are or you're not. You are, you may accrue comp time up to 80 hours during, during the calendar year, but you're not, otherwise you are limited. If, if this wording is accepted, you're, you're limited to 80 hours in a calendar year to earn.
So it is a matter of earning comp time and the...
No, no, it is a matter of earning or something, but now how much can you accrue in a year? If you're limited, if you are saying you can only earn 80 hours, you can only earn 80 hours. If you can, you can accrue 80 hours by earning it, then, then you can, you can keep replenishing it, but it, it's the approval, that is the, it is the terms that you're using that it is not clear.
Okay. So I understand what you're saying. And, and again, I think we can, to John and Joe's point, we can sleep on this and talk about it at the next meeting and really ruminate about it.
Yeah, I would.
But just so you can have all the information, here are the definitions that are used for comp time earned and comp time paid.
You got first.
And I feel we just, okay, just, it may be rich.
Yeah, with me, it's going. So you tell me you never commit under that, I would never commit under that.
So we don't have to go over this right now, but the, these are the definitions that we came up with working with Kim and Michelle.
I can bring it up to...
Yeah. And, uh...
But that's all I understand, this is all I'm thinking. Once they reach 80 hours, anything over, they get paid for it, and time that clock stops it. All happens, you have a fact, or they...
They, they, they get older than, yeah. But if they use the part of the 80 hours, they can replenish that 80 hours. So you're not, you're not having just a full 80 hours, it just goes on. It would go up to 200 hours, it's all like, well, that, that you would take it.
No, I think, if I can, I don't think that earned or paid is the issue.
No.
It's the inclusion, that's the issue.
But why don't we move to the whole policy? And this is the kind of thing that we, when we sit down, we can fine tune.
I think we can fine tune this.
Because there is some reason here.
I think we need to make a note, I think we need to make a note that John has asked us to consider an option that does not include replenishment. Did I understand you correctly on that, John? Yeah?
But I think that, if I can, I think for the employees, that first sentence seems to say 80 and that's it. It goes on to say otherwise, but all it says is 80 and that.
Yeah, it does.
Is, is that the intended, that's, if that isn't the intended, that sentence, then it needs to be revised.
So we'll take that, look at that, but Bill, what that actually means is this, if you take, if you are paid in comp time, and you use those hours to count for your work week, and then you work overtime, and you earn comp time to, as, instead of taking your overtime pay, you take comp time instead, then your comp time pay keeps replenishing itself.
That first sentence does not say that.
Which first sentence are you referring to?
Employees may earn comp time up to a maximum balance of 80 hours in one calendar year. You're saying 80 hours is all they can earn in one calendar year. You go on to say that isn't the case at all, but that first sentence says you're limited to 80 hours.
The word maximum.
Right.
This is the problem.
What's it, maximum balance?
Maximum balance of 80 hours.
Oh, yeah, balance.
Well, then it, yeah, it's the, and then with any single pay period, and an employee who reaches a maximum balance...
Okay, but if I review that, I would want that really clear.
Yeah, well, what John is asking for is that to be the way it is.
Oh, I know what John is asking for, what I'm saying is, is...
Every time you earn...
Right now, it, it needs to say what it says, and it doesn't, to me.
It changes, isn't it?
To me, if I were to say it's just...
But I just want to conclude this conversation while Dave and Danny are here. Look, we all know what happens here. When they get up to 80 hours of earned comp time in their comp pay, they have to go back and be paid in comp time because they've reached that 80-hour limit. They then have to go back and be paid in comp time to reduce that to below 80 before they can replenish it again. It goes from 80, less than 80, to 80, less than 80. Isn't that how it works?
The way it works.
Thank you.
We fully understand that that's the way it works. That's not what this says.
Okay, I hear what you're saying about that, John. I'm not sure that's what it says here, but I, I take your point that this is maybe a part of the findings anyway. And I'm making a note of that, Bill. But the main thing we're going to be doing is taking this, which is codifying the, the comp time the way it is right now, and we're going to be comparing that to what John suggested, which is no replenishment, for the next meeting. Okay?
Well, they had 110 on it, that's what it is, is what it says.
So, yeah, so I, I'll take you offline and explain this, Rich, because Kathy and I can explain this to you the way we learned about it. Okay, so I think we've got that, and we're going to take that up at the next meeting. Page eighteen, no changes, page nineteen.
I have a question on nineteen.
Sure.
And I, I have to tell you because it goes back a few years ago, I don't remember, but there is something about, in the VLCT handbook, about how harassment and things are, and I don't know if it says this, I don't believe it says to the personnel committee, but believe it goes to the chair or goes to the board. I'm not, I'd have to, you have to research that. There's, there was a, I, I can't remember, but there is specific statute or something that, that how, what happens if there's a complaint?
Yes, there is a defined process.
But I don't remember being the personnel committee, I don't, I think they...
There is a defined process, can anything agree? And Joe will definitely look into that.
Yeah, we need to look into that.
Who gets to, but I just want to say that we worked with a person from PASTA, and she approved this, so...
Well, it might be, but again, maybe this changed, but somehow along my mind, it was, because there was an incident coming up about this back when Emily was here, and I remember looking into it, but again, that's five years ago.
I think, I think, I think this again.
You have to line this, any, any employee who wishes to report harassment should file a complaint, a member of the...
Yeah, but I think, I don't think it's, I think it's different.
Yeah, I want to explain why we put that in there, because it was a request from one of the employees, that they could go to one member to talk about what was happening, and then we would report that to the board, not a member coming to the board.
You might be right, and I don't have a problem, I just, I just wanted to show you what I'm thinking.
There is a process.
Definitely, we'll take, we'll take a look at that, and then...
Can I, can I speak to that?
Yeah.
As an employee, I think that should be any member of the select board. There's no reason, the limit is to the personnel committee.
But I think, I think it's, I think it's spelled out. I mean, we might want to change it, but I think, I think there was some language already in there, how that is handled.
Well, the problem is, if that, if that person doesn't want to speak to either one of the personnel committee, or if some of the members of personnel committee are the problem.
No, it should, it should never be limited to, it should be limited to, it shouldn't be limited to two individuals.
And it's the select board that has the authority.
It shouldn't be, and that's why I think you need to look at that statute.
We'll cover that in the next meeting, and I appreciate the feedback.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Sure.
We discussed this, are you supposed to be included in that, because I'm only a member of the board?
You, you are, actually, and we, we specifically followed up on that, Kim, on your behalf, and I want to just, I think I might have it right here. The select board is responsible for overseeing the general affair of the town. It needs to be ensured environment-free of harassment, even if the source of harassment was from a member of the public. And if an elected official complains of harassment, the select board should conduct a prompt investigation into the allegation.
And so where is that?
The, the addendum says the elected official will be subject to the personnel policy except for sections on discipline and termination. The person will also be covered by sexual harassment and harassment effect on the town's personnel policy. And if you feel more comfortable, we can definitely put that in addendum B.
Where would you put it, what were you planning on doing?
Uh, well, because this, the information we got from PASTA said that the elected officials are covered by that portion of the policy, but if you would feel more comfortable, we can put it in addendum B, that sections thirty and section equal to, uh, sexual harassment and the employment harassment discrimination can be covered under your agenda.
But wouldn't it be, I mean, like, our listers are in the office, and they're elected, so would they be considered still to report under this?
Mm-hmm. Definitely.
Yeah, I'd like it put somewhere, so it covers all of our legislative tools.
Okay, I think that's it. And I just want to...
I have a question, though. On page twenty-one, you repeat the same thing again, any employee who wishes to report sexual harassment.
Yeah, so we'll look at that.
And then, and then the procedure, once the person, if you complain, I think you have to look at all of it.
You do?
Yeah.
But looking for both, for both the employment harassment and sexual harassment, Joe, based on your question.
Yeah, we've got any complaints with, with, with the select board.
Okay, so I just want to quickly review the, the action items, and if there are any other action items, please let us know. So, we are going to consider the option of no replenishment. We are going to look at the language of members of the town in one calendar year of 80 hours and see if that is made in the way or not. We are going to talk to the LCT about employment harassment, sexual harassment, and find out, definitely have a grievance process, and who gets to receive that complaint. And we're going to add the elected officials to the sexual harassment and employee harassment sections of the policy under eligibility. Are there any other action items that came out of this discussion? Okay, and so then, could we just go ahead and recap an item on the agenda for twelve minutes?
Actually, we, we are...
And thank you very much.
Thank you. Other business, is there any other business? Other business, is there any other business? Yes.
I just want to say that coming out of the blue and not knowing anything that you have done, I thought that was really clearly put together, and you guys knew where you needed to look for questions, and I think John's concern about how we, we'll go through, so I would just say, well done, ahead of any changes in the way you had, but quite, quite easy to follow.
Thank you, and we are grateful to the employees who gave up so much of their time to help us learn and help us understand what the needs are. Thank you.
Any other business? Any public comment?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Two quick things to follow up on. Some wants to go to the great dude's expression about the coming of the Emerald Ashmore, and we've heard absolutely nothing since we never knew that was. And I'm just wondering, given that you're in the budget proposals now, if you should consider perhaps putting a little bit of money aside in the next several years in the event that we are infested. There's no question we're going to be infested. I also wonder whether or not you're in touch with anybody, the county forester or anybody at the state level, to be aware of what may need to be following the town in the near future. The reason I suggest putting money aside is that if there are large trees that need to be taken down, my understanding is that our, our highway department doesn't do that. They put it out into the general puddle. So I'm just wondering if it's not a good idea to begin putting a little money away to, to consider that. So that's one thing. I assume there's still no town forest, is that right?
That's correct.
Does he like to read? About that, or?
We've advertised, we've done everything we've had, and we can't find the volunteer.
Okay. The other thing that I'm ordering you about is there was going to be a big cleanup on 121 West, and whatever happened to that?
Kathy, you want to...
Yeah, we did, we did a cleanup.
A little, yeah.
But not the one that we wanted to do, because the owners felt if we found anything that was suspicious or drug-related or any kind of hazardous material, it's up to the landowner to fix that. They didn't want to do it.
So the landowner has refused to do it?
They refused.
Okay, now one other question. I know that one of the landowners up there donated a considerable amount of money towards cleanup. How has that been accounted for? Because as far as we can tell, the town never saw any of it.
No, that went to the guy, all the volunteers that came up from Pete's up in Wyndham. They, they moved all the trash in all those areas from where we couldn't do it all the way up to the line. And, okay, the trash is unbelievable that they picked up. That's where the money went for the disposal of that, and for the two, actually for Austin and his friend doing traffic control, that's where the money went.
Oh, I was under the impression that the dumpster was already provided, but doesn't make any difference.
No, it was, they had to truck what they pulled out up to Wyndham, to, to the dumpsters.
As long as it's accounted for, because...
Yeah, it was.
There was no, no record of it on here.
All that, all that.
Never enough, too long. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Any other public comment? If not, the next meeting, we'll be here on Monday, the second period, at 6:00 p.m. Somebody want to take a sip of German? Do you have a second? All of them, all of them, German?